We will open up the December 21st, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. It is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. It is being recorded and will be posted on the website. However, anybody here can record it using to let us know. Is anybody recording tonight? Okay. Seven o'clock Town Planners Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have a whole lot to report on that isn't already on the agenda, one way or shape or form. But I will note, Mr. Phelps, you've been coming as we like. You attended the quarterly meeting of the finer by the planning commission. I did at least.
Yeah.
If you were on the right striving at the time. And if nothing else, there's renewed energy and discussion towards east-west rail connections. And if you will, getting all through Massachusetts and New Haven. So it's a, this is a lot of excitement around that particular topic. For sure. I didn't have time to attend a citizen play, student citizen plan of training collaborative session just to understand and hopefully better communicate to members of the board, subcommittees and members of the public might be interested in what those programs entail and what depth they kind of get into. This particular one was related to special projects amongst the seasoned gentlemen, primarily I think kind of the familiar territory. Nonetheless, but I haven't said that much. I think the other pieces of daily business we'll find as we go through the agenda tonight. Thank you. You have the draft for the next.
Okay. 7:05, public comment. Anybody, let's start in person, have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Yep?
Just curious, we were here two weeks ago and introduced the letter about our concerns for the buffer and didn't know what the next step was at this point now, if anything had resulted.
I don't think, well, I'll turn it to you to see if anything from your end. I've been swamped for two weeks and haven't had a chance to make any of the phone calls that I wanted to make, but have you?
I did, as you know, project in the right direction, still get picked up by the microphone with the mask. I did review the permit in a similar way that you and I talked about over some of our time. That being my particular focus, looking to see if there was a mechanism built into it that would compel the developer to implement that particular feature, kind of specific milestone. And suffice it to say, I don't see that that monument anything that had to be completed by a certain phase of work in this area.
I understand that, but if the house is not being built in two lots that are flooding us, do we wait till whenever they're all built and that's when it goes in? Or if there's some mechanism we normally do for open space and you require whether it's land use or any, you know, that open space is that often is in the west side, you have rocks, I don't want rocks, you have rocks going, you have surface areas to the washing and all that. And that was in the plan. We have plans for this fence and the trees that walk and what mechanism would be there? You know, we did the government agreement, if you will, but assuming that there would be some sort of, I don't want to say blah, but plan, whenever you have an open space or buffer to institute it. And what I don't want to see is that they come forward and, you know, things in that process.
I'll ponder this. Shall I?
Yeah.
Suffice it to say, the matter of revision being proposed on the west side, in my perspective, in my role, I do see it as apples and oranges. I don't see that as a feasible proposal over at the east side. Mostly because there was a particular push behind that one set of revisions, the recent one on the west side that was driven by the residents, homeowners themselves. And with an absence of opposition to that one issue. But even in that decision on the west side, where there's at least a new commission talk about that stone path, there was no mandate as in terms of the timing. The only mandate that I see from the middle side comes down to subdivision et cetera. When the developers approaching town to turn over roadway, which is a public feature, not the, which is one of which happens to be, you know, the public plan. That's, that's when that all has to be in place in order for that to be accepted by the town.
So what is, is there any anticipation as to what is considered finished and when they're supposed to come to get that? I mean, what is it, what has to be done all of the houses done or does almost all of them sold and several lots not? I mean, what, what precipitates them probably to ask for the roof?
The infrastructure has to be, the infrastructure, I mean, all the public improvements.
Projects like the drainage?
The drainage, roadways, sidewalks, mailboxes, street lighting, underground utilities, services, if you will, provided at least at the front of each lot. So the lots of development themselves, although I think we're probably all encouraged that something sees continued interest in residential growth, that's, you know, considered completely separate from a view of that infrastructure component that the developer is focused on.
As, as a butter, when that roadways, what if you approve, can we get the content? I mean, how would we know? I don't want to see them for that for change.
Sure. I'm looking up the thing about the process because the request comes in. But I don't believe that's a publicly advertised process. I would have to double check if you're 100% fair. I mean, they, it gets accepted at town meeting. For the most highest, if you will, mission component, working with that. But there's a punch list of items that from my role as well as D E W, we run through. Developer connection, those items are satisfied. And that goes into the fair review of the permit and the premise plans.
Is the planning board, the planning board put anything into the final approval for the roadway that, that that point is moved into a net prior to the roadway? That it's part of the roadway, like something?
It is, it is part of the acceptance process. The features, the conditioned items in the, in the subdivision approval, as well as the feature shown on the site plans are mandated improvements. That's what has to be seen in order for acceptance to move forward.
That's the best way for me to follow up and know when that might be coming up. And will that, you know, how, how is best is it for me to follow as a, as a butter to know how things are?
Sure. And that's a great question because I don't have a good answer for you. But I will, but I can make the obligation to try to find that answer for you. That I, under the assumption and interpretation that the best time to understand is before it comes to town meeting.
If I may.
Yeah.
The component that's missing, I think, in this discussion is that we came before the planning board when this was still on paper as preliminary plan. And the planning board has the discretion to ask for changes at that stage in the drawing. Nothing was put in the ground. It was just on paper. And I came and I asked the planning board simply to provide some open space separation between us as a buffer. And I could have, you could have dug our heels into the ground and all fought it out in court and do all that. Who knows where that would have come? But I was asked by the planning board directly to go to the developer and work out a solution. And I thought that I was being cooperative with the planning board and saying, okay, I'll meet you halfway. You guys don't want to lower the boom on the developer and make him put in fifty feet. So I'll go work something out and I did. And I, I accepted that with a handshake from Mr. Fiore and Mr. Levesque. And they said, Bob, we're going to put this, Bob and Sue, we're going to put this in the plan and that way it's definitely going to get done. You have our words. You're going to have a buffer between whatever in there and yourself. Well, we don't. There's a hole there with nice people living in it, a beautiful home with no buffer. So the point I'm getting at is can the planning board at some point exert its influence and say to the developer, look, we asked this butter to come in good faith, to come up with a solution to you. You proposed a solution, Mr. Developer, and we accepted it. We didn't come back with a counter proposal. We just said, okay. So you go to the developer and say, you know, because certainly they're coming back to you for things, just like they did on the west side, came back for some changes. They want to put driveways out into the highway. They want to do other things. There'll be other times where they come to you from short changes and whatever. On the east side as well, it's a long way from, from the town. There are points along the way with work and step in and say, okay, we know you want to get this done. Here's the matter of the only a butter, residential a butter really to the entire development is Bob and Sue Stevens. You made an obligation to them back in 2018. And we think this, anyway, I don't want to tell you how to do your business. I'm just, because you and Sue are having a dialogue about when do they technically have to do it by law. And that, I've seen subdivisions go a decade before it's accepted and, or more, or never get accepted. So, I mean, I don't think that was our intent. I don't think that was your intent. I don't think that was some lax intent when he asked me to go talk to the developer directly, which I did. Sorry. I don't want to beat this to death. I appreciate you listening to us tonight.
Good to be playing show.
Yeah. Let me just say a couple of things. One is, before I do anything, what I haven't had a chance to do in the last two weeks is talk to town council about, you know, about this issue and what sort of, what sort of enforcement, not by the board, but what sort of enforcement in general with the available in this situation. So I need to know that before I do anything. I also need to sit down with the plan a little bit closer and, and the, and the permit and understand exactly, you know, where everything was located. It's been a number of years and I just don't remember exactly the scenario. I do remember the issue coming up. I just don't remember the exact way it played out. But, you know, and I don't see it as being a completely unreasonable request. I mean, when did they build that house next door?
Right?
When?
Well, they built it, yeah, over the past year. It's been inhabited now for maybe about several months.
All right. So, you know, I mean, I, I think it's worth a conversation. I mean, if you want me to do something right now, I'm not sure I could do anything more than just call up the developer and say, hey, would you want to do this? And, and, you know, I mean, I'm not sure, they're not in a stage where they're going to be coming to us anytime soon, I don't think, for anything significant. And so I'm not sure I see that leverage right now. But if it's not a big ask and, you know, there may be stuff down the line and I gotta just, I gotta see where the, you know, issues are. I don't mind talking to them. But, you know, at the same time, I mean, I, this issue was never raised. There was no timing component ever raised from the developer standpoint or from your standpoint when we had the public hearing on this. And, and, you know, I mean, it, it makes sense to some degree. I don't like to get too deep into the weeds about the order of things in a, in a subdivision because I frankly don't know.
And I appreciate what you're saying and I agree. I think I, that's what I got the impression of the last three years, you were talking to council and take a little bit of plan and about that. I think all we're asking for is a reasonable answer with a timeframe, some understanding of what you could expect. So that if two lots don't get sold at a butter property, well, it's not done, so you don't get it. I mean, that's not what the intent was, was to have, you know, it was a smaller space lots and it's supposed to have open space around it. And we got the open space in our area.
No, I mean, if the intent is to have a buffer and you have someone living there and you live in here, right? The, the sort of point of having the buffer is, you know, to, to have that buffer there when someone's living here and someone's living there.
We leave, assume there's going to be a buffer. In fact, that's even what Cal and Eno said to the robot. They promised you a buffer, so if they're going to put a house there, then they're going to put the buffer in. I, I had the same question for, for people that were helping us and I.
My concern is that the current resident may not be aware of that buffer and then all of a sudden, wait a minute, you know, and then why?
Well, but they, I mean, they don't have a say in it because they purchased the property with the plan that filed. So, you know, I mean, I think, let's, frankly, nothing's going to happen right now with the buffer anyways, right? So this time of year, so it's not going to happen until the spring at the earliest anyways, I suspect. So, but we'll look into that and hopefully, you know, in January, have a better sense of exactly where all the, you know, all the pressure is and we can decide whether there's a conversation to be had at that point. Any other public comments from anybody in the audience here? Anybody on Zoom have any public comments? Okay. 7:10. 159 Berkshire asks, continue public hearing on a stormwater management permit application.
Chair, I did receive a request to continue this item. The project engineer, Derek Hale, met online with the director and I last Friday to review a couple of items, some questions that he had at the time and some clarifications that Randy and I want to make in terms of what the expectation is for managing stormwater, stormwater change at this particular site. In response, Mr. Hale has provided, if you will, the outline of the permit history thus far and some of the actual items requested. We are looking at a site visits early in January to be scheduled, but I would expect the, the appropriate date for this to land on would be
Do you have that in front of you or not? Are you going to the fourth?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We do not have.
Okay. All right. Well, I would say, let's do the same thing.
7:10?
Yeah.
January.
Do I hear a motion to continue that public hearing to 7:10 PM on January 18th?
Marcus Phelps will move. Richard, I'll take your second.
We'll all call vote. We'll start with the live folks. Michael Doherty, aye. Marcus Phelps, aye. Richard, I'll take your aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, and aye.
Okay. There you go. Oh, now they're standing over. The other thing, just to, I got, we got to talk about the January 4th meeting and what's on there. But I think we have language in our advertisements and generally on the agenda about hybrid versus Zoom only, you know, that I would be just telling people now, I would be looking at the agenda. It comes out on Thursday usually, Friday at the latest before the meeting. And so just take a look at it. We'll try to make the decision by the time the agenda comes out. But, you know, it, I think there's a chance that, that things are going to start moving a little bit more toward potentially Zoom only. So just keep an eye on that because that's a possibility for all these things that we continue on. Okay. 7:20 Wireless Communications Service District Bylaw Revisions Continued Public Hearing. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did have some interaction with the town administrator in regards to where we left off. What we left off had to do with trying to pursue engagement of the wireless communications professional. They'll look at both the bylaw and the mapping as one component, as well as looking at a drive-through to accomplish, for signal weaknesses for those opportunities that they have. It is now on my shoulders to work alongside you, Mr. Dory, pen up a letter to submit to both the select board and the finance committee. As you recall, I think the sum total was somewhere south of $10,000. But suffice it to say, that's not some that we have available in our planning board budget. So we'll have to pursue discussions. See if there's an opportunity.
Okay. In the meantime, can you reach out to, and I don't have his name right in front of me.
Mr. Maxim? The professional?
Yes, yes. And just get a sense from him about timeframe?
Absolutely.
And I think, I think the sense of the board, and tell me anybody if I'm wrong, but was to, if funding allowed to do that, you know, drive around and figuring out where there were gaps or where there were issues that needed to be addressed. So if you could, you know, reach out to him and just get a sense of timeframe, I'll try to make some calls and key help with the, the funding.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Anybody on the board have anything else to discuss about the Wireless Communications Service District at this point in time?
No, we're on the right tracks.
Okay. Anybody, any board members on Zoom have anything? Okay. Any town officials have any comments at this point in time about the potential bylaw revision? Okay. Any public comments about Diane?
Just a thought, Diane Gale, five point. Possibly are the funds will be available for that as infrastructure?
Yeah, I will, I will reach out and folks in town have spent a lot more time on that than I have, so I have no idea. But I will reach out and get the thoughts on, that's a good idea. All right. Any other public comments about the Wireless Communications District Bylaw Revisions? Okay. Hearing none.
We're going to continue that?
We'll continue it on to January 4th.
Motion for it?
Yeah, let me just figure out the time. Why don't we put it on for 7:30?
Do we have, we advertise two special permits? When are they coming on? I don't remember.
7:10, 7:20.
On the 4th? Okay.
State lots, large, I believe so.
We have the, we have the solar.
I'll put it at 7:45.
Solar and what's the?
There's a state lot.
Is that solar one going?
Thanks.
Yes, okay. Stay locked, will we play?
That's a, just stay a lot inside and do this.
Okay. So then, all right, why don't we, do I hear a motion to continue Wireless Communications Service District's public hearing to 7:45 PM on January 4th?
Marcus Phelps will move. Richard, I'll take your second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye. Marcus Phelps, aye. Richard, I'll take your aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, and aye.
All right. 7:20. Everybody look at the August 10 minutes. And submit any changes that needed to be made. And take that as a yes. And you made any, or Meg made any that you submitted. Is that right?
I'm going to say this out loud. Did anybody submit revisions, just in case they're, they're going to make instead? No, I think.
I did, but it's been a while ago. I think, yeah, I think I gave them to Megan. I don't know. I don't have anything that's marked up, so.
All right. Well, if we can hold on that, it may not be here. So we'll see whether those get, whether those have got updated.
Thank you.
Before we go. All right. We are close enough to at least get this started. 141 Congamond Road, informal discussion for off-street parking use and capacity use. Who's here for? All right. You want to come on up here?
If you stay for a while, the colds and that's not over there, Ken.
You're here?
Yeah.
Mr. Sutton's going to get us some new chairs, so we're not sitting on.
Well, Lord.
I guess it was already down there. It's scary sometimes.
It wasn't drawing. It wasn't drawing.
Do you want, oh, maybe Rob's.
Oh, maybe I didn't have that.
It's probably Rob.
No, no, that's fine. I can look at it. I just don't remember if I had it. Turn it over to Rob to lead that discussion or anything new to, to talk about.
Good evening, guys.
Yes.
Yeah.
Here.
It's not every day you get to see me in my habitat, right? I don't see it. Oh, there is. So Rob Levesque, Marleveque Associates here this evening representing Ken Engles. We had a nice discussion a couple of weeks back. If you remember, we were discussing kind of the merit for some calculation related to boat slips versus parking versus, you know, you know, different types of boat slips and different types of parking, parking by boat, parking by vehicle on land and how that all kind of interplayed. And I believe we left off with the planning board deciding that it would be good to let it simmer for a couple of weeks in terms of digesting what we had proposed and seemed to me that the planning board had some. Digesting what we had proposed and seemed to me that the planning board had some ideas as well. In addition to, you know, the discussion last week, I did have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Eggleston. As you can imagine, lead times are a big, a big item. So, you know, he has, in fact, he does have docs available. Initially, we know that the docs that he wants to have may not be at a number that he exactly wanted. But we're hoping to try to get a reasonable number to make the business viable. And we did discuss, and I talked to John Goddard about this over the phone earlier today. The idea of a look back provision. Oftentimes when we do like Dunkin' Donuts restaurants or something that, you know, they're worried about stacking spaces or potential traffic issues. Planning boards will put in a decision, a look back provision that basically gives them a little, gives them some teeth to look at it, you know, after the first season. In this particular case, or, you know, in the case of Dunkin' Donuts after the first year. So I think, you know, with the, what the planning board had suggested last time, it seems logical that ideally we can come. Some sort of agreement on what, what seems to be a palatable number, hopefully. So that we can then, you know, get our drawings finalized, the applications associated with special permit amendment. Site plan approval into the planning board and then really the big long process, unfortunately, will likely do the chapter ninety-one license. Which we anticipate will take a little bit longer at the state, wetlands and waterways program has had some significant changes and I don't know. If there is anyone in the Western Regional Office doing wetlands and waterway review, so that's going to be a tricky sticky wicket for us. So if we can. Ideally land on a, for that will give us. An opportunity to move forward and get the clock ticking with the chapter ninety-one license. So that's kind of my story and be happy to discuss anything related to that. And I think obviously Ken's got some good ideas on programming and what he needs to make it a functional viable use.
So let me just ask one thing, Rob. To do the submission. To the planning board. I mean, what? What would be the changes? That would be reflected on a plan if it was, say, you know. Thirty slips versus fifty slips. I mean, would it just, just simply be? Text and the drawing of the slips is not really. The only thing that is.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm hoping, so there's a couple of different pieces to the puzzle. We're kind of working from the inside out, outside in. So. The inside being the planning board, the outside being states. What we need to do is obviously satisfy the planning board with a proposal that I think passes the straight face test. With the opportunity to look at it and, you know, make sure that that's the case. I think Mr. Eggleston was hoping to get a little bit closer to forty slips. Based on the last discussion, I, you know, I hearing thirty, I think, can you, did you actually purchase, you know, is there, is there, did you say there was about thirty-six that you actually purchased?
Exactly thirty-six have been purchased at this time.
And, and don't take my numbers as anything other than I was making up numbers to give a range, so.
Sure, no, no, that's great. No, and, and we appreciate that as well. And we are not presumptuous either. We understand that the planning board needs to land on a number, but, but, you know, the opportunity was there, lead times being what they are. Eggleston, you know, obviously wants to have this in place for the season, so he was, he needed to purchase when he did. So that said.
Benefit for a manufacturer. To make a decision.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have.
So. What I'm, I think we're gonna run into is probably an approach that we submit to D E P with, I'll call, you know, the proposed. Or, you know, wish list docs, so to speak. And then we'll have ideally what the planning board allows under the current special permit. And then with the look back provision being in place, if that's what the planning board decides, ideally we would, you know, if, if everything goes well, I think Ken would like to expand, obviously, it's, you know, makes the. The property much more viable, but we also understand the, the planning board. So I think phase one, season one. Ideally, if, if we could get, you know, you know, thirty-six docs and feel comfortable that those numbers can work. With some sort of teeth that the planning board, if for some reason enforcement is needed. Or if there's really an issue, we would address it. I, you know, Ken would have to obviously agree to that because. I know he doesn't want to open his doors and, and then get shut down in any way, shape or form. So, you know, lots to think about there, but. If we could, again, land on that number, we would put a proposal in to the planning board. For special permit amendment and we would also submit to the D E P, which would be a longer process. So ideally we'd get this permit amended, you know, within the next. You know, month or whatever the timeframe would be and then D E P will take, yeah, completely less. And then D E P will take, you know, take what they're gonna take in terms of time to get that taken care of.
So help me understand the. D E P process, because I, you know, we haven't dealt with that here and I don't have any familiarity with it. Is it? Do they care about? The parking? Or are they simply looking at other factors to determine whether X amount of slips are going to be allowed in this area?
I think it's fair to say that the way they care about parking is in the, in that they want to make sure that the planning board doesn't have a problem with the proposal. So there is a, there is a, an aspect where they look for a planning board to have reviewed it and prove it. I believe they also look at the dock master. Or I'm sorry, the harbor master. So that's another piece beyond that. They're going to be looking at the waterway itself, the impacts to the waterway. There's very specific requirements. The trick is that there's a multi-step process. That's very specific and very different timeframes associated with each. So we actually have to file what's called a notice of intent with the conservation commission first for the wetlands impacts and resource area impacts associated with South Pond. Once we have that input, ideally have gone to the planning board, we would then submit the chapter ninety-one license. They do a complete, completeness review. Whether it was from complete or not, there's a timeframe for the completeness review, there's a timeframe for, for each of the review steps. And ideally we give them, looking forward with a lot, without a lot of revisions, but even with the timeframes as they are in a perfect scenario, it's, it is a fairly long process.
And I guess I'm trying to figure out, is there any? Reason not to go to D E P asking for. You know, sixty slips or whatever your, your dream number was, and then however it plays out here is however it plays out, and I don't. You know, I mean, I think that that idea of. You know, a look back provision or at least, you know, assessing. The reality of the situation, you know, after a year or so is a, is a smart thing to do. Because this is kind of new for. You know, a new scenario for the board to consider. So I think it benefits everybody to, to sort of reassess it after a year. But, you know, I assume. I assume if we have whatever number with some sort of look back provision, that that's not gonna impact. You folks from going to D E P and asking for sixty slips or whatever the number may be.
Correct, that, that would be the intent. So the idea would be to try to permit as many slips as we can from a waterways program, the understanding that was, so say we show some of those being dark as a phase one. D E P allows something, let's call it a reconfiguration zone. So within the, the footprint, overall footprint of the docs, they'll allow you to reconfigure docs as long as you request the reconfiguration zone. Prior to, or, or with, with your submission. So in the, in the event we wanted to add a couple of docs, certainly I think we could do that under our permit as long as it was initially permitted for that. So. I think step one is to get through planning and conservation, planning being, you know, showing the phase one. And then the phase two wishlist docs, and then we would have. The, I'm sorry, D E P would look at the entire impact will be a project from the wetland and waterways program point of view. From under a noticeable ten. And then we would have the chapter ninety-one license after those two other pieces were kind of developed. So all in concert, generally speaking. Would be four oh one, I'm sorry, not the four oh one, the, would be chapter ninety-one license lagging behind slightly.
Just logistically, does it make sense to talk about thirty-six slips right now? As the initial is the phase one, because that's what you have that. You have ordered, or, you know, are we still just trying to figure out? Where the board's falling on the highest possible number?
I think we have thirty-six ordered. I think Ken will answer and say that he would like the highest possible number, but it's palatable to the board in that, you know, we don't want to cause problems for ourselves either. Ken, you want to speak for that?
Yes. I would like to have the highest possible number. I will say, this is the first time that Rob has heard this, that that number is no longer sixty-two, but sixty. Because. These first two in this drawing are going to be impossible because of the depth of the water. I have already ordered thirty-six stocks. Because it was a financial situation as well as a. Timing thing, whether or not we could. Get the docs in time for next summer if I didn't order them now. So what I'm proposing is that I'm going to be putting. Eighteen here. Transient here and eighteen here. I would love for you to. To approve the thirty-six because that's all I'm going to get into two thousand and twenty-two anyway. But I would like to know how we've, how we come up with a thirty-six number so that we can look at the parking situation and do the math and figure out what could be the maximum that we could, we could be allowed. But I'm good going through two thousand and twenty-two this way and my goal would be to maybe add this and this in the next year or two.
So let's just start here, at least in my head, this is the way I do it, which is. And I apologize because I left sitting at my desk at home, my notes from the last one. Tell me that, tell me that capacity again.
Okay, just got the paperwork today from the architect who tells me that ninety-five is the number. So we're looking at ninety-five occupancy as the maximum.
And then the, you know, highest shift number of employees?
Ten.
Okay.
So if we take the ninety-five and we go with forty percent. Which is allowed for the restaurant, that's thirty-eight that are needed. If we add ten to that, it's forty-eight that are needed. As Rob has drawn the parking plan. They include sixty-three. The. There was, there was conversation at the last meeting that you might take into consideration the fact that. The chapter ninety-one D E P people require me to give boaters in the water access and parking to come into the restaurant to be available to them. So there is. Needing to be a transient parking, which is going to be for eighteen. At one point we talked about it being twenty, but it's really eighteen. So I've got eighteen spots for people coming in off the lake to be able to park. We, we said that we might take some of that into consideration. As a parking spaces. So, you know, if you were kind enough to give me eighteen of those, that'd be great. So.
Yeah, I think the key is that the land base. Activities are important to have adequate parking for that.
Right.
And then whatever is available can, can drive the dots. At least that would be my, my thought.
Well, let me just.
As we proceed in the. Steps.
Okay.
Mr. Phelps, a lot of the, the. Whatever goes on at the restaurant, whether it be music, eating, drinking, is also going to be, you know, access from the water. I mean, if you know what's going on now over on the lake, you know. The walk. And the old Krabby Joe's, even when it, when it was open, a lot of people, they've got boats coming in there and they're, they're even parking out in the middle of the water to, to listen to the music. So allowing them that access is. Hopefully leaving some parking open in the front.
What was the total number of parking spots again?
There are sixty-three parking spots drawn. Here.
Does that include the spots that are in the town right away?
Yes, they do.
Which is ten, correct?
Which is ten, yes. No, nine and a half. Actually, if we do the measurement, let's call that nine point four, so maybe we'll just round it down to nine. But it's true. Yes.
Yeah.
Ken, year one, and Rob, you can answer this as well. Do you see? Those trains yourself going in as the full eighteen, you think it's going to be a proportion of, I'm gonna call it whatever the grand total is with, with D E P? I don't recall how that is set up. Of the, those slips out there?
Those transient docks are going to be the wooden docks that have been in the water owned by Krabby Joe's forever and ever. That's how it's going to start. Okay, so I'm going to be using those same eighteen that he's always had.
He used the quantity.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. Yeah, that's, and the goal is. Depending on what you're allowing me to do in year two or year three, the goal is to absolutely replace, replace those. Terrible wooden ducks. There, and, and by the way, those wooden docks are going to require me to put a bubbler system in the water. To, so that they, so the ice doesn't freeze up around them, because I don't have the same capability that, that Joe Skidary may have had to be able to take them in and out of the water every year. Which with the bubblers allows us to leave them in. Because I guess it takes a big crane type of thing to, to get them in and out of the water. And he did a great deal of damage to the deck area, taking him in and out of the water all the time. The concrete pad up there is, is all cracked up. So, but yes, I plan on. Using all eighteen at one time, in year one, in year one. But again, transient only. There won't be any slips rented on those at all. I will add. Just because I don't want it coming back and be at some later time. There are the, the, the owners of the restaurant coming in. Have in the past docked their own boats. At Saunders and they will be docking their boats over here. And not paying. So they may end up on the front of the transient dock, but that all depends on how many slips I rent, how, you know, how, how crowded it gets or whatever. But if you see it, two boats sitting on the end of, or in the beginning of that dock overnight, overnight, they're the owners.
And so here's where my head's at with the town right away. It's for me personally. We've come across this issue before. When. What was the name? Red Riding Hood's basket, right? Was before us. They have some parking spots that are in the town right away. And those were not used in the calculation. Not allowed to be used for the calculation of necessary parking spots for that restaurant. So we do have some precedent there as to how to deal with town right away parking spots. It's not to say that you're not going to be able to use them. But as far as. Counting them in the. Calculations. You know, for a. For the restaurant portion, I think would not be. Appropriate. Given what we've done in the past and how we've done. Creating other businesses in town. Doesn't. You know, but you still have a somewhat amorphous. You know. Slips and, and how you're going to treat that. And so, I mean, I, it. The idea that there's potentially parking there, I, you know. I don't know, I don't know what to do about that yet. But I do think as far as the restaurant requirement, it will be tough to use those particular spots. So right now. From the restaurant standpoint. That would give you, I think, five additional spots. Then you would have ten. In that right away. And, but, or, you know, board member, consider those however they want to consider them. Um, and, and but, or, you know, or remember, consider those however they want to consider them. For a total of fifteen, potentially fifteen parking spots for cars. Um, and then you have the transient, eighteen transient parking spots, so. Yeah, I mean, I do appreciate you saying that may get used by the owner of the restaurant. So I, I, so again, however we want to consider it, sixteen, eighteen spots in the transfer.
But they will be parking their cars over here, you know, in the parking spaces.
Who would be?
The owners. In order for them, you know, their, their cars, when they're there to use the boats, they would be there. So. But okay, I hear what you're saying. Kind of double dip, they would be double dipping parking wise.
Correct, but that's, you know, I mean, that's your own, I, I, it's, it's the way you're, whatever agreement you have with them to do that. So I guess let me turn to the board to see where you're going from, from there, with those numbers.
May I bring up one more thing?
Yeah, did I miss anything?
I'm not sure that you missed it. No, I think you did. You, you, I think you had mentioned it all, except that I, I gotta come back in, Mr. Phelps, and um, and bring up something that was mentioned in three meetings ago. That um, under certain circumstances, there's that opportunity. If, if a, if a, a good purpose is proposed to you, that we could use an eighty percent type of number. Eighty percent to one twenty five, and, and I would ask you if you could take that into consideration, um, because that would increase our sixty, our fifty three, I'm not, I can do the math from my head, but if we got fifty three left. I'm not sure if that number is based on the amount left, or if you look at it from the um, the total sixty three. But fifty three divided by point eight, that brings it to sixty six. If you would be able to make that special permit that allows you to do so in the um.
What did you call it? Oh, off street parking regulations pertains to me.
Yeah, I think, like I said, going back, uh, the key is to be able to service the land part with, you know, good parking spaces. And I'm assume, I assume uh, we varied the sizes, Rob has changed, varied the sizes that are allowed, uh, so you have the ten by twenty and some of the smaller.
Right, so actually, there's more than, there's more than seventy percent that are twenty by ten feet. And there are less than, and there's less than thirty percent that are eight by uh, nine by sixteen. Right here.
Yeah. So, so you've worked the most you can out of the square footage you have there.
Yeah, and over here is the nine by sixteens as well. Of course, all the ones along on the town property were the um, ten by twenty footers.
Yeah.
And all on here.
Yeah.
But in this middle area, um, and over here are the only ones that are smaller ones.
Yeah.
Because they're in the centers. Everything on the outsides, outskirts are all the ten by twenty. So yes.
Yeah, I think we're going in the right direction there.
Um, if you have thoughts? Okay, anybody else on the board have any, come out somewhere they think this should go as far as a number? Nothing, huh? All right.
No pressure. That's good.
After last meeting, taking a look at it, my, I guess my biggest concern is lack of parking for patrons. If the number of dock slips Mr. Eggleston has available for rent are utilized all at the same time, if those people are there for the boats, then you don't have the spaces for the patrons there for the restaurant. And I guess, not being a boater, not having the experience of running a dock bearing restaurant. I would say half at any given time, which means you would need eighteen parking spaces available for those people at all time. Plus your ten employee spots. And if you take that away, the twenty eight from the total of sixty three that we currently have available on the site plan. That leaves you with thirty five spots remaining. And forty percent of ninety five occupancy is thirty eight spaces. So I guess that just to me, it seems reasonable that there would be thirty five spots remaining in the parking lot. If the, if almost all of the patrons expected in the restaurant are coming in from the land. Um, I realize that leaves out your transient customers. But my thought process there is that you're going to be serving those people to go, most likely, and you know. Or dock side or whatever, you know, however you want to um, say it. Um, so I think it would be reasonable for the board to uh, deliver a decision where we allow Mr. Eggleston to install those slips that he has procured and suggested that we allow him to start off with, with the um, look back provision that Mr. Levesque has suggested. And we can take a look and say, hey, if after that first season, that didn't work, then we take another look at it. And, or certainly don't allow the expansion of further docks at that point. That was my math, it might be wrong, but yeah.
Sounds great to me.
I knew you would love that, sure.
Didn't go in a direction I thought it would.
Merry Christmas.
The look, the look back could go in the other direction as well, right? If.
Correct, no, I mean, that's.
If you're an optimist.
Correct.
If you're an optimist.
I'm an optimist. But I also know that I expect this restaurant to do tremendously well, but um, I think it's going to do well year round. So not just season.
Let me ask you this. The ninety five, is that all inside?
Yes.
Are you going to have exterior?
Yes.
How many are you looking at outside on the decks?
I don't know that there's a number put on that.
I don't think there's a number by the fire department, but I'm.
No, I'm uh, I'm looking, uh, I'm looking at something that is not for public, whatever, yet. I thought that it said so somewhere. Just from the architect who gave me. I'm sorry, I haven't read this over.
What's your question?
You think, well, there's going to be additional people out there, yes.
For those people, rather than the ninety five, some of them moving out on the deck.
In the summertime, we don't think anybody will be indoors, if that helps. It's not that we're going to close the indoors, we have inclement weather or whatever. But who other than handicap people or, or older people like myself maybe, um, will be inside on a beautiful day? But that's, that's just me guessing.
Food is so good that they want to come and get it, they may be inside, right? And they can't get a spot outside.
Yeah, possibly. Um, I don't, I don't think that it, it says to, it answers to that question.
But it does. I think it's fair to say, I think it's fair to say, guys, that the patron use area, the exterior of the building, what Ken had mentioned, you know, the, the majority of the use that we anticipate inside during the, the normal season would move outside. So, you know, there's probably, like you said, a percentage of folks, maybe it's twenty or thirty percent that might remain within the building. Um, but we would, I would, I would, you know, with other areas that we have exterior patron use, we typically are not double counting for exterior patron use. It's typically something that is looked at, maybe a percentage is put to it if necessary, but I think in this case, like Ken said, you know, if there's people out on the deck, it's a nice day. If there's people inside, it's raining, you know, that's kind of, you know, during the season.
Yeah, and I don't, that's not unreasonable. I, I certainly wasn't thinking of it as a one, you know, a, 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 a one-to-one addition um, of numbers. I just wanted to consider the whole scenario and whether that impacts it, especially since we're dealing with slips that are going to be used during that summer season and, and how that's going to play out. And I don't, I, my memory is that it's not an insignificant size deck area. Um, you know, there's a good amount of.
Yeah, area.
Area out there.
One of the things, uh, through the chair, if I can, one of the things, you know, as we're talking about this that comes to mind. And we've done this a lot on different projects and kind of, it's, it's another belts and suspenders thing. We could look at, you know, Ken putting together as part of this proposal, um, what we'll call a, a parking management plan. Um, you know, how we intend to maintain um, the spaces for the people that have slips. You know, maybe they, you know, obviously, if, if they meet people at the site, you know, they would be provided only, I'm assuming, one space per slip, so that they're not, you know, commandeering all these other slips. I'm sorry, space, uh, spaces. So, you know, I think there's a lot of management that goes along with this ask. And I don't think it's a big deal or that complicated, but I think Ken could easily put together what we call a parking management plan that could give you a little bit of comfort going into the season, that there's going to be somebody paying close attention, so that this doesn't become an issue. Or if they have to redirect them, you know, they can redirect them to where there is parking available and, you know. You know, maybe they'll have to carpool a little bit to get there if they really want to be there.
We've, we've already discussed with um, the, the proprietors or whatever, the people taking over the restaurant. I live, if you kept going down Congammon Road and go over the bridge, I live right there on the left. I mean, three, four hundred feet from, from this building. And uh, we have discussed, and it's probably going to happen, employees will be parking on my personal property. Because it's well within walking distance, but to, so that we're able to open up more to the patrons that are coming in. And um. You know.
That's Connecticut, right?
It is Connecticut, it is Connecticut, unfortunately. Yeah. And there's also a big, big parking area in Connecticut, right on the shore, that is supposed to be used for, you know, people with their kayaks and whatnot. But first come, first served over there. But we, we have alternative parking options.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's none of which we can really take.
Exactly, I understand, I understand.
Um, but I get, I mean, I get it, I.
And we also, I, I wouldn't want to encourage that, you know, the, the idea of employees walking across state lines through that curvature of road isn't a great, a great idea. And as somebody whose family likes to go there and kayak and fish, we also don't want to be fighting spaces because the new restaurant down the curve doesn't have enough parking spaces. Just, that's my thought here, let's not go in that way.
You know, one other, one other thing, Mike.
Yeah.
One other thing also, is that I, not even sure I even like the attitude of that. Well, first come, first served. That area down there is used by a lot of people who, who bring their, their kayaks in by car, by trailer, so they don't have to pay eight dollars each to lodge three or four kayaks and enjoy the lake. So you want to use it as a, oh, well, they can park down the street first come, first served?
That's not, that's not my attitude, that's just, it's open area.
Well, so that makes it okay. I see.
I'm not telling people where to park. I was talking about employees parking on my property and, and to, to go back to uh, uh, Repel? I'm sorry, Jessica, thank you. Um, we, they would not be walking. That, that would be a carpool kind of thing, where they would be driven back and forth from my home. They would not be walking. That was part of our discussion as well.
Well, we're ready to move forward on this, right? Submit an application in January?
Right.
I get it.
I would.
Probably get approved by March.
I guess it. I would say. I would say submit an application with those thirty six spots. I mean, I, I shouldn't say that, you could, you could certainly submit an application for forty spots or forty five spots. I'm not seeing it going much higher than the thirty six, if at all. The way I'm running it, but I, I'm only one person, so um, but it didn't sound like people were jumping up to get much higher than that. So.
The thirty, thirty six i- is a great starting point for me, and I'm, I'm happy to be at that number. That's what I purchased, that's what's going to be in the water. It would be great to make a hundred percent use of those. Um, and look back at it, at the end of the summer, just come back in here in uh, in September and, and discuss it in, in here. You know, hopefully they'll all be hearing from you all during the summer. Hey, we see, we think you're doing a great job, or hey, there's a problem here. What are we going to do to resolve, you know, what are we going to do to fix this? Like the, like what Rob just discussed, you know, a parking management type thing, which is something I will discuss with the operators of the restaurant. Is that, you know, they're going to have to monitor the parking. And make sure that the boat slip people don't show up in three, four cars type of thing, or, you know, the restaurant people.
Yeah, I mean, I, and again, I'm, I, I don't think we're guaranteeing you get thirty six, or we're getting, you know, a, any number, but. I mean, I guess I can see where you can get there. I see where you can use the eighty percent. I see where you can use some of the transient and, and factor in the times of year and how that plays out. I mean, I see it. I don't have any doubt that if it got approved at whatever number, um, that there's going to be, you know, a one-year trial period with some pretty decent data that we'll be looking at, um, which would include you know, some degree of counts of, of, you know, slips versus restaurants, and, and, and that we wouldn't get into your business, but at least getting in some, you know, higher level counts of people over the course of months um, or weeks, or however we decided. I think you have to have some degree of accounting for that, or at least that first year, to give us a sense of how things are playing out on the ground. You know, and I think there certainly would be observation by, you know, town officials of, and seeing how that's playing out. Because that, you know, that can be a problem down there. It's been a problem in the past, and, and that's not something we're looking to pause, so.
Well, I know it's a problem on a lake. I know, you know, um, Louis B's on. The Walk has the problem, Kurt Saunders has the problem. Yeah, I mean, summertime is, everybody wants to be on the water. You know.
So.
You know, I'm looking for thirty six slips. Saunders has got a hundred and thirty slips.
I understand, but I mean, it's the reality of that parcel.
Yeah.
And so, I, I, you know, I think we're to the point where I think it's reasonable to put in an application for somewhere in that range and, and you know, we'll, we'll take another look at it when we see it on, on, you know, with the application right there. We'll have a public hearing and the public can weigh in on what they think about it. Um, town officials can weigh in, and we'll see where we get to. So if you put it in soon, that's, we're probably talking.
If it's real soon, second week in January?
Yeah, it's real soon. You could make the January twenty first. Would have to be, or no, eighteen, eighteen. It would have to be um.
Rob, you ready to go?
Does a one-legged duck swim in a circle?
Yes, it does.
Um, so, but, and Rob knows the deadlines, so um, he'll know when to submit it. But that's, that would be the earliest you could get it on is for that January eighteenth and. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Take care. Good night.
Call me anytime, if you have any questions. John knows how to reach me.
All right.
Thank you.
Good. Want me to bring up that decision of the.
Even though where you live now.
Four oh five four Mountain Road. In West Lafayette.
This is, uh, the dentist.
Yeah. I feel bad if you didn't.
Did you submit it or not?
No, I couldn't.
Oh.
I just printed it out today.
Okay. All right.
They're mine.
Printed it. Uh, oh, the one that got.
You just sent it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got it.
Okay.
So this is the decision for six sixty-four College Highway. Special permanent site plan approval for a dental office use. Um, you want to just click on the line on the left. All right, no, no, my special, no. Click on that.
I'm sorry.
Over there, so you can see the. No, what is that? Oh, yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe I just thought there was more changes on there. Nevermind, sorry. Um, okay, um, Marcus, did you, you had mentioned some changes?
Page one, item one. An application to permit, take out the permit a dental office.
And I think I have. Yeah, it's not the. Anything else on page one, anybody?
No.
Okay. We can go back. You know, it's going to drive me off.
I'll be happy to listen to it right now.
Page two. Does that? Uh, well, now I just screwed it all.
Is John making the changes?
Yeah.
Why?
Why? Yeah. This is required watching right here. But I just, we'll, we'll deal with those spaces later. I'm not gonna, I don't know why that's doing that. It was doing that last one. Did I make the change on page two?
Sure.
You got it.
So two are on the same page.
Um, so to speak. Zoning and be. There.
Yeah.
So using that constitute a nuisance, uh, because of the existing site design. Everybody okay with that? Where are you? There are three.
E. So adding, because of the existing site design to the end of that.
Yes, that's good.
Yeah.
Do you have the change?
Yeah. All I thought was the Y, which you. Marcus is what.
Okay.
He's got it, but Marcus is accustomed to it.
All right. Um. All right, so number five, um, adequate and appropriate facilities will be, will be provided instead of will be provided, but are available because we're dealing with that existing building that is not being changed in any way. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. There's just an extra word in eight.
Thank you. We're on page.
Number eight, um, says has been be made. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
He's asking, he's asking. You could have just accepted that real quick and we could have been over that.
That's, I would, I'm gonna beat my body.
You know, all right. You see your own typos. You better accept those quickly, that's all. Again, number nine is the same idea. Just reflecting that no exterior changes are being proposed. You know, instead of provision should have been made for maximizing groundwater recharge during and after construction. It's, it is what it is at this point.
Because a provision has been made. Just wait, just wait.
Fine, and I would put. I would, that's fine. Because a provision has been made for maximizing groundwater recharge and no exterior changes.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, uh, ten, just changes, takes out the shell and makes it provides because, and it's existing. Eleven, that's the same thing. You know, changing it to, um, through the retention of existing vegetation versus through the use of screening or vegetated rock resounds. They already exist.
Oh, you have the change.
Twelve, just defines what the chapter is, as it's, I think that this chapter is from the actual bylaw.
Going back to ten, should be, again, in the eleven? Take out the will and just say minimize, the project minimizes the visibility. And then the other stuff you added besides. It's similar to what was done in ten.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
So design of the project minimizes the visibility.
Yeah. Okay. Well, just puts in the identifying what the chapter means. Thirteen, just, um, nothing wrong with thirteen, right, John?
That's right.
I have two items, I have two items in thirteen.
Let's hear it.
If it's the same thirteen, the proposed use will only generate noise normally associated with a professional office, period. Drop use at the end.
Nothing to see there, okay. Um, anything else, Marcus, on, um?
No.
Page seventeen, okay.
Page, no, the seventeen.
All right. Uh, see.
There was a little, uh, that last sentence. Did you catch the above reference? There's no space there.
Right.
Hyphen.
Oh, you put a hyphen in there?
Okay.
Yeah. Not on mine.
C. Nothing to do there, three. Yeah. I'm obviously supposed to be the only one to speak up if anybody has anything else, but Marcus.
C six. C six.
Short ahead.
Electrical, electrical surveys. I think it's services.
For services. I'm happy to have been able to bring this.
Probably typed it at midnight.
I think that's a, you know, technical.
Electrical services.
Thank you.
Just, that's what I'm saying. Uh, nine, would just change it again to reflect existing conditions. Um, will allow to allows for, um, I think that's it that I had on C. Anybody else have anything?
I don't.
The decision, I just changed the word development and develop to use in the below manner and propose use as well as picking out zoning. Everybody okay with those?
Hard to get on fancy conditions.
I just, instead of develop, because it's not being developed. We're just really talking about our use.
So, yeah, sure.
All right, so I think that's all set with the decision. You can accept all those. Yeah, I think we just referred to it as the special permanent site plan approval period. Decision at the end. You're down farther, keep going.
Okay.
We're in, uh, we're in paragraph. Okay, what did you want to change on one C?
One C, uh, there's nothing to be constructed. It just says the entire tract of abandoned buildings shall be, shall not be used.
To take on to be constructed.
Take up, is being constructed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Three. I think I just hyphenated that.
You want to sign a time period? What's such a thing as this? Provided within.
Yes, that is a good idea.
Where are you going?
So you tell me.
If no such thing exists for the distance of our green system, the African shall cause said plan to be developed by civil engineer and submitted an endorse copy to the planning board.
Oh, three.
I think within twelve months is the reasonable period of time.
Within twelve months of the decision.
From the date of the.
Date of the decision.
I think you have maybe one or two just, uh, format changes that I've ordered them accepted.
Yeah. Much, yeah. All right, anybody have anything else on this decision? And we vote on it. Hey, we're voting on it. Do I hear a motion to? Actually, I take that back. We, um, we just closed the hearing at the last one, right?
Yes.
This is what I've been trying to do, right? So, um, do I hear a motion to approve the application for a special permanent site plan approval for six sixty-four College Highway? As, uh, subject to the conditions and for the findings listed in the written decision. Marcus Phelps will move.
Give you a second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Dory, aye. Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave's been a aye.
Okay. That is all set.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Have a good night.
Have a nice holiday, Dr. Walsh.
You too, take care.
All right, uh, is Randy?
Do not believe Randy is here.
Does he have to be here?
I think so.
He's a tree ward. And it's just a planning board here, isn't it?
Okay, well, we move on to, uh, the next.
Oh, we can, we can write it up. We can prepare it and then handle it to the next meeting.
We can go through the proposed changes and then he's. That's fine, I don't.
I think that would save his time. We don't have to.
That's fine. I just don't think you can vote on it until he's here only because.
Right. See, get the votes. Your signature is on there.
Yes, he does get the vote. It's a joint hearing of the board and the tree ward. And pull that up, yeah.
This is actually his application, isn't it?
It is, because they're in a town right away. And he's the only one who's elected.
So he gets the sign, he gets to approve his own application.
He does.
That sounds a little strange.
It's a good thing the planning board is involved.
Yeah. But, um, just some format changes, I think on page one for the most part, oh, yeah.
I would just put in an item one, I would say the number of trees in each location. You know, four parentheses, four number and two parentheses, two number.
To remove, I would, so, yeah, the application to remove trees in a town right away near a seventy-one and eighty-two Klein Road, and then in parentheses after Klein Road, I would put whatever.
I put it before there to remove four trees. However.
Yeah. Well.
Long as it's in there, it doesn't matter which way it is.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of, yeah, I think we go like this, because I need that. Get a monitor right away. Um, so, yeah, put then two trees afterwards. I'm just indicating that they're in the town right away.
In number one? Oh. Okay, I see you added.
That's why I threw the stuff in parentheses after, just.
Yeah.
Put it. Radical to indicates that he reviewed it as well in four. Matter. W director, right?
No, that does not necessarily.
Findings, um, I just clean that up into one thing, right? It's, it's you're cutting public tree trees out of the road under these two sections you're required to have a public hearing, joint public hearing. Is that right?
Yes.
So we got rid of four.
Got rid of four, just put it into one thing. It's just grammatical. I have no way of the typo there.
No.
And. Yeah, it's indicating proposals left, removing trees, indicating that Randy's voting. I think that's it.
We just have to think, change the date when we vote. They're voting tonight. So it'll be January something.
True.
January fourth two thousand twenty-two.
All right, so that'll be all set. We'll vote on that in the next meeting. Actually, we're gonna change it to January, whatever.
Fourth.
Why don't I pull up the next one?
Okay. I'm fine with that.
I didn't grab mine yet.
I understand the, uh, the mental process to go through this.
Oh. I. It's out here.
I just want to pull up the. That by law too well. What is it? Um.
I guess two minutes break.
Yeah, go for it.
What are you looking for?
That's fourteen, right?
Yeah. I want to have that up on your screen if you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, yeah, you have a.
I do.
This would be a special permit and site plan. We'll just wait for Dick to get back. That's what we do. A big chunk of it. So, um. Oh, we've been doing it. Address. I just want to keep these, keep these as consistent as you can. That's right, but we have everything else too. All right. Protection District Special Period.
Triple check. Oh, that protection district.
Especially.
Just get started.
Okay. Um. Okay, you might, can you see the screen back there?
Yeah.
Do you want, because we don't have a printout, um, or you actually do. Okay. But I don't have a printout with red lines, so, um.
I know what it is.
All right. So first thing, we're just, again, format, we'll put in the, um. Title of what's being requested and the address. Um, findings and decisions of the planning board, application. All that thing. Our procedural history. Yeah. So it's zoning.
Doesn't want to leave it online, right?
Yeah. I don't think it's on behalf of, it's with the. That. On the side with the consent. Right? Is that what the department is for the application? You can do it, but with the consent, that's the actual property.
That's a good search.
Did we open it on June twenty-nine?
We did.
We technically did.
Yes.
And immediately continued it.
That's correct.
All right. I just couldn't remember if we opened it. But I suppose it'd be advertised if we had to. Um. I'm just gonna change. Permit since it's more than just.
A lot permit up.
For number three. Do the revisions through November thirtieth include that extension of the sidewalk down the, if I recall, southeastern side of the loop?
They do not. They do not. Uh, but, uh, we will see that reference later in requirement for final plans into that walk to be extended.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna have to submit the, yeah, final plan. So it'll be included in that. And it'll be a condition. Um.
Yes. Doesn't.
What I was hoping for. Okay, so it's definitely that number for this application. Is that what that disclosure form is called?
I wrote it, uh, six times. Technically, it is what it's called. It sounds awful every time I type it, so.
Little butt head, one beer, two beer.
I'm sorry?
Word of butts, one beer, two beers. Well, perfect. Let's get back to us. There you go.
And I'm just. Up in forty, twenty-two point four four acres and the art twenty-eight. And business. Once. With. Question. Well, it's a question. Yes. It is. Are the only wetlands the ones on the, um?
Uh, west side, southwestern corner, yes. That's very limited area.
Well, I think it's probably worth putting that in there since we talked significantly about this.
In the southwest side.
Right. Let's do a street to the south. Yeah. Um. All right. Anybody have anything else for general findings? Are you gonna say something, John?
Yeah, um, number three. Thinking back to the source of this document, I had an interior. Or the, or the surveys, yes, because I'm too over here, but, uh, in this particular case. Look at the freezing of that, uh, that will be up suitable for access purposes, um. Lessons, or we can make reference to, or additional reference to people's street.
Yeah, I mean, it's two different things, so, um. Site will be. That's the goal. Deep boat street. So as to be acceptable to the planning board for access purposes. Right? And then. Four is. The development. Will. Served by a private way that is suitable with great layout and drainage. Development. And active purposes. And then. Brown, sorry. Unit. That make sense? Uh. All right. Anything else on the general findings?
Do you mind, which is shown not ever be developed? I mean, should.
Not ever be considered. Um.
Are you, you said I'm okay. Oh, it's not about you. For a long time.
Uh, that's exactly what we have a people square, right?
Is it?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
That's the same thing. These are designed to be private. It's probably the same thing over at the range too, right?
It's a lot of stuff.
I mean, it doesn't, I suppose it doesn't mean that you can't come and ask for.
Yeah.
My position, right?
Any lot, the fudge of which is bisected by any zone, shown on the zone, shall be deemed to be in the zone in which the majority of the lot lies. That addresses the ultimate business of overall project. As this lies in the art community district. I will work to keep going.
Just, uh, you know.
That's just a battle of another day.
You can. Only have so many classes about how to properly blue book something before you.
I am fine, I figured. There's a, there's a method here, that's, that's all I had to go with.
It's just ingrained, um. All right. These are compatible characters for us. But same for straight. And board members, anybody wants to jump in and yell, please do so. About any changes. We didn't put up because on three. Um, and I would suggest because of the site design. That it's. It's reference to how we looked at it. Those shoes will not constitute. Okay, five, six.
Doesn't matter. Last line is a good shot.
Set up. Set up for failure.
First line of that, thanks after requirements.
Oh, I put it twice. Wait, no, sorry, hold on. I put it in the wrong place. Yeah, I put it twice, sorry, of any, oh, I just, in effect, I put it, yeah, alright, sorry.
Listen.
Those used. Army. Alright, anybody have any other changes? Uh, to. The findings for the special permit criteria under seventeen. The planning board has considered all of the above criteria. That's. Specific findings. Also, try for adequate particular access drainage and screening without detracting from the surrounding area or the environment. Refusing or second materials shall be collected individually for each unit, rather than a central collection slash transfer area. Those use will connect to municipal water and sewer. You got that? Less than twenty-five percent of the gross land area will be covered by buildings, roads, parking areas. Purposes. Density of development is less than the maximum allowed at the zone, no building will exceed thirty-five feet in height. Structures will meet all dimensional requirement. Of commercial use or accessory commercial use, posed for the premises. People streets act with to carry the additional traffic to be generated. At site. Um, by the.
We should have the word on there, by the, on the site.
Yeah. As on the, by the, uh. Post. The configuration of the computers, where the site are sufficient to minimize potential traffic congestion or safety hazards on the sites. After supposed to address drainage by an engineered drainage control system meeting the needs of the site as described in the show, monitor, report, and on the project plan. Products will be installed on one side of the side way in accordance with the plans to encourage safe pedestrian travel within the development. Let me have see the, um.
Fire in. Because of condition of the decision. That's where we're working, okay? Extension.
Okay. So. But, I don't think it's on one side of the. And as. Describe the law. Right? Should encourage safety, that's your travel with it. Okay. Question. Hey, that's the criteria. That's everything for, for that, correct? Or, um. Or the, uh.
That's correct.
Um, if someone out in the audience wouldn't mind just sticking the little, uh. Piece of wood in the door and opening that, that would be lovely. Thank you.
To put it in the vacuuming.
Huh?
Can you put it under vacuuming?
Oh, that's fair, yeah.
Still steam. His hands are probably getting. Worked out.
These are the requirements for the wellhead protection, protection district and the earth excavation permits. Alright, anybody have any? Uh, any board members have any other suggested changes in the special, in the specific finding section? Speak now, or. Let's go to the decision. This is.
Last sentence. We say, decided to grant special permits that may have been consistent.
We may all, yeah.
Over his type lower case before. Must be some of the beginning. There we go. We're gonna keep an eye out for that, that, in some other time. So those two spots.
Okay. Anybody have any suggested changes, um? Board members about the decision language there.
Mike in the first paragraph says it is therefore decided to grant, why don't we just put that, is therefore granted? Make any difference? Third sentence, third line down. Therefore, decided to grant.
You know, that's a bad, yeah, it's.
Therefore, granted.
Therefore, granted, um.
Triple. Here's a hot person.
Actually, it's probably, it's therefore grants, right? Therefore, grants.
Granted.
Now, you're doing it.
Okay.
By this document, so I think it would be grants. Okay.
Okay, I think that, therefore, granted, I think, therefore, shows past tense, which is. Is it for granted? Was just go, what do you want? Thank you, Mike, I mean.
I'm here, but you all are doing such a great job, I don't have to pop in.
Jessica, and, and decisions, third line down. It says, is therefore decided to grant a special permit. I'm saying is therefore. Granted, Mike says therefore.
Therefore, grants.
Therefore, grant.
It's the same as the word decides in the first sentence.
And the right answer is.
I think you have to keep the same tense going through the paragraph.
Try to hear it.
You might, you might wanna make it more proper and say the planning board therefore grants.
So, yeah, uh. The planning board.
Therefore, grants.
Special permit.
Okay, okay, you go back to sleep, Chris, thank you.
Called on me when you needed me, good idea.
Funds regulatory.
And notwithstanding, should be, to be comment after that.
I'm guessing.
Hey, Jessica.
Yes, dear.
Under every one, the word notwithstanding, should be comma after notwithstanding?
No.
Okay, I skipped that class. Okay, thank you.
Now, it's not understanding of that, it's saying the. Subject of what's not standing.
It's the subject, it's not a separate clause of the sentence. If you wanna get technical.
Why is she in this capital?
I don't know. I don't believe that is the capital. Copy first. Same thing, their line down, and do. My face too much, I want to. And generally.
What we're gonna do is highlight it, so that you just go into highlights and make the changes. That will require time.
Don't want to tear things up my first six months.
Yeah, second six months. Yeah, I'm just saying that something got the clock fixed within hours, I think. I mean, you know, just get that in mind.
Touche.
You have made it long term on this team to this document. Before the place holder. Showing.
But we have any discussion before about.
Well, it's been a particular individual, right?
Get back on, C two.
Alright, so I think that can be.
It is made elsewhere.
Supposed to find a lot of.
That's taken out because it's dealt with that, um, the requirements before in the.
And C two says, yeah.
Yeah.
About individual. So is that gonna have dumb things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number five. Owners, uh, but it was. Nothing close, but I wanna have a group for discussion. Typically, anything that's. Within these units is, uh. Side or probably less than some of the elements, a lot of the activities for this. For the home inside the. Uh, back to by the home.
What are you doing?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's not really. Do you wanna cover? So. Well, this really wouldn't be applicable, I mean, I suppose it would be applicable during construction, right?
Yes. That's fair.
But subsequent to construction. Really, that's not a common area. That's supposed to leave it in, it just tie it to the common areas, right?
I think they'll cover the base.
If it's not relevant, then it's not. During. Construction. Be better, read better, but that's.
I think that works. Arguments to developer. Or. One more association.
Thank you for sending that, you know. All right. Speaking of here's. Yours. Correct, no. Yes.
That's good.
All right, so let's talk about. These two things. Yes, we could do them separately or together, I don't care. One is the security for the stormwater infrastructure, the other is, I guess, sort of a mitigation type of. Amount to sort of upgrade the.
Intersection.
The intersection. Not. Not a real. Substance way more on the, on the, on the markings and whatever else that's there.
You will put it on the filter.
Not construction. Yeah, right. Oh. My inclination. Would be to put in provisions for both of these that simply just. Just for the. Determination of value to. DPW directive. Because he's the one with the knowledge to do it. But I'm happy to hear. Suggestions otherwise.
I'm happy DPW.
Anybody else? That works for me. Okay.
Thank you, I moved on from the permits last night, that is consistent with. We've done previously for stormwater. That makes sense.
You have the language from the little permits or no?
I can chase it up.
But I'd almost want to use the same. But that's okay, you do that, we probably also, well, let me just generally ask board members if there's any other terms and conditions that they feel are necessary to be added.
No.
Everybody, anything?
Performance bond, I know will be handled by your DPW director.
Yeah, well, yeah, he's grabbing the language that we've used before.
Right.
Give me a minute, I want to look through this. 18514 and see if there was anything else. And is there, I guess it gets covered by other ones, is there a provision that says basically you need to comply with it? 514. There are a bunch of positions. Just requiring, you know. All that rest, I mean.
It's only the five year thing. This happened less than 10 years, five year, kind of lost their money. For five years.
I'm sorry?
The five year holdback on the money. If it happens, that's the penalty rule, nothing happened in five years, we lost from there.
That's correct.
Can we carry it along or is that a normal one?
I suppose the term is up.
Nothing from. Conservation needs to make it into an art decision, right? Fuck that upside down.
That's correct.
All right, I do want to put in a couple of things here. Go back up to.
Excuse. The development north side, College Highway, that's as brief as it was. Good news is I found it, but that's still, so perhaps we can find a way to still. Or insert.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
That idea. You were hoping it was up.
Yeah. Specific findings number nine. People's street that the current edition of traffic, okay. You're talking at the end saying it because of the increased traffic.
What I'm saying is adequate. I think we're, I won't, I won't speak for the board, I think there's a.
I don't really see why you're interested in that. So it contradicts.
Was the other sentence of the counterbunds?
Number nine.
No, number nine contradicts what?
14. I think. Number nine is saying that the road to hand the traffic. What you say.
For that number nine right there?
Number nine. It's 14. Down here.
Number 14.
Oh, sorry. Well, I might have changed something, so the last thing. All right, well, I, I'm not. I don't think I had any attention to writing most of that. But, so let me just deal with the stormwater first. Yeah, the medical construction cost of the stormwater management infrastructure. Through. Cash now, right? What we're looking for? Actually, I think I gotta add in, really.
Yes, that's the one that I want.
By securities vision to account.
My question for.
Hold on one second. How does that look? Am I missing anything?
The one issue, that particular part you're working on reflects. The directors with you, that's what they can produce and we asked them.
That is correct. You don't want to. Run it at that. All right. The African will provide security through a performance bond of cash amount sufficient to account for the estimated construction cost of the stormwater management infrastructure. Which estimate is to be submitted to the director of the South Department of Works for approval cards for issuance of a building. Anybody have any issues with that?
Pretty good.
Well, we can maybe take a couple of apartments to rent out.
Yeah, that's gonna be the next issue we gotta deal with, and maybe the last one. Not the renting out. Not providing those. Well. We want to call it other non. This word and other. Careful. I don't give leeway, but I don't want to, you know, I want to make clear in this that it's not designed to do much more than freshen that up and. Just make it a little bit more prominent or, you know, not a huge amount of. But enough that you want to be more fun. But not infrastructure. Someone called for a better word. I'm going to leave that there until we keep going. I believe word choice is something that anybody in the public, if they feel like suggesting words.
Roadway reconstruction. Is that what you're trying to get at?
In the other surface. Or safety related buildings. Surface is a.
No, I like that. I like that. That's I think what we're getting at.
I wanted to work you suggest something.
He maybe doesn't show up. He gets all this stuff.
Hey, Mike, right above there says to the intersection of intersection of Depot Street.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
So you thought I was sleeping.
And that's proven me wrong. You weren't sleeping before.
I can, I can sleep talk.
This didn't work. I'll be really.
I mean, my feeling is whether we should put the payment on determined by the director of the Southwood Department of Public Works, but in no case will be greater than X amount of dollars.
You better let him figure that out number out because their gallon of paint isn't the same price as our gallon of paint.
Yeah, well, Randy. Uh, he has suggested no greater than 5,000, I think. Which seemed reasonable to me. In the scheme of things.
He would, he would know.
And at least it puts a number and then he can negotiate. And may have better sense of what needs to be done there. I don't think we need to. Let's see.
Asking your budget? Figure, figure budget do we do? More than ours. Thank you.
Is this, what is this from? Is this from the sidewalk mitigation plan stuff?
That is from.
Oh, the intersection. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, potential. See, is that when we want to send by?
Suppose that covers the first two. You wouldn't want that cool down, right?
First. Do that. That's fine. That'll give time for Randy to figure this out, too. Anything else that needs to be put into that condition?
Oh, my question on that number nine. The people's street is adequate to carry additional traffic to be generated. Then fourteen says because of these traffics.
So I. I think it's adequate to carry to the street is adequate to carry the additional traffic. But I think. Because there will be additional traffic, which is inherent in number nine. It is appropriate to have a mitigation or have a payment amount to. You know, lack of a better word, freshen up signage and markets there. I don't think they're inconsistent in my mind, but I'm happy to listen to.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
Doug just put a, put a comment up. In number fourteen, there should be an allowance regarding excluding the time period of any appeals.
I don't think five years adequate. Those five years happen on practice supply and we ran on.
And then we didn't put, I wouldn't put in a time period. I think it's just going to be a payment amount for that. To, to a fund for it. I'm trying to think, Dave. I think that that's, isn't that covered in a general? Provision or am I wrong? I mean, it doesn't matter because it's conditioned on the, it's on the. It's on the certificate of occupancy, right? Which will, which would be inherent that the appeal would period would be done at that point. Dan. Right? Are we talking about the last two things, twelve and thirteen that we're looking at right now?
No, number four. You must mean the ones before.
You had it, we had it before, but if it's on the screen right now, it's, it's thirteen about the mitigation payment for the increased traffic.
No, no, no. Sorry, Mike. I took myself off mute. I think it's the one for the, the intersection improvement where they had to post them an amount of money, but they got it back after five years, but it's not five years from the date of the permit, just like the, the permit is two years. But that clock doesn't run until after appeals. It's the same thing.
We don't have the five year period in there.
It was a minute ago on number fourteen.
Right.
Did I miss a memo?
Yeah, you took fourteen out, Mike. You took that out with it.
No. So it's irrelevant, right?
If it, if it's going, if there is no fourteen, then the point is move.
Well. Let's put it this way. I was. Hold on.
Yeah, you took it out that they got. There it is.
Oh, I was just writing it in thirteen with the idea that I was going to delete fourteen.
Perfect.
So it becomes irrelevant because thirteen is tied to the cert of occupancy and that's.
You're correct. That solves the problem, too.
Okay. All right. We had nothing in Depot Square about. Homeowner Association and covenants and all that stuff.
Then we underran it. I'm saying, don't have the one on the ranch.
Well, I mean, I, again, I'll just open it up to the board members as to whether they want to put anything in there. I honestly don't know. Kind of looking through fifteen. How we throw it into three fifteen. But obviously that came up. I personally. In all honesty, could care less. But.
Can you clarify the question, Mike?
Or the idea of whether there, I mean. You have two entirely different legal structures depending on whether this is a. Apartments or condos, right? And. Under. Unlike the subdivision requirements of. Chapter three fifteen. Under. Section four, one eighty-five, fourteen. You are, you know, you have a greater. Flexibility, I guess, because that is to build. And I'm just trying to grab the term. Is it defined term, right? Apartment units, right? Is that what it is? No, no. Or isn't it gardens? Sorry, I'm looking at the definitions. I think that's where. Fourteen. Residential garden apartments. Is that what it is? Go back to the definition. There are. Some defined term in there. Maybe it's just a. Apartment house, a freestanding multifamily building used exclusively for residential use consisting of a minimum of four units and a maximum of twelve units. Such buildings may be condominiums, townhouses, garden apartments, and related multifamily dwellings. So that is what is allowed under one eighty-five, fourteen. And. I just don't know whether the board wants to address that issue. In this decision in any way.
Well, so long away. We need to protect the town.
Protect them from what?
Protect the town.
Over the roadway that, you know, looked probably at the ranch type of situation.
How does the difference between apartments and condos change the roadway?
It doesn't at all.
I'm still confused as to what we're questioning.
So. Right, right now they have the ability to, they, they could do apartments or condos. That, you know, they, they could set it up for a legal structure as apartments or condos. You know, typically in three fifteen, when we have open space and subdivisions, we have. You know, an HOA set up with covenants and all those things are turned into us and approved by town council and yada, yada, yada. That's not set out in this decision. In any way, one way or the other. I mean, it seems like they have the ability to sort of do whatever they want. And I don't see any real, if they choose to do condos in some way. And they sort of have free rein as to. The documents that, that cover it as well. I mean, I think we do have to have something. Maybe I can look at that site plan again, but to protect the open space, right? I mean, someone has to, the open space has to be protected and maintained in some way. Whether, if a homeowner association is not going to be set up, then the. Whoever is the ultimate owner of the entirety of the property has got to be the one responsible for it, but I just.
Put that in.
It's just, it seems odd to me to not have. Any of that in a. Decision. I'm just trying to look for language here from three fifteen.
You can go either or to correcting the become or.
I, I think that under the bylaw they can. Like I said, I don't really. Care. See a need for both of them. It's out there correctly. Some degrees.
I mean, the open space provisions established by the site plan have to be met by whoever's the owner as it's being developed and. That's right hand side. If for some reason they decide to change their ultimate plans and sell it off to a property management firm of some kind that would make them apartments. That owner would be responsible for maintaining the open space as the owner of a larger apartment complex. If it ends up as condos and an HOA as has been established multiple times by the applicant as their intent. The ownership and those responsibilities would fall to the HOA, no? And do we have the right here under one eighty-five, fourteen to dictate that answer outside of the owner shall be responsible.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it plays out. Through other laws, right? If you have an apartment, then you're going to have an owner of the property and they would otherwise be responsible for. The property.
The special permit and site plan and all its rights and responsibilities are transferred via ownership. Not via occupants.
And if you have a condo set up. You're subject to the condominium law in Massachusetts, which is going to require setup of.
And your adherence to HOA rules, which will have to adhere to the special permit.
Right, just it's, I guess the oddity to me is that we're not having any say or review in that legal structure, which is what we do with 315. Because all those have to be submitted to us prior to being filed with the registry.
And I, and I guess that it's not part, this isn't part of 315, so we can't impose that on it.
No, and I think that's.
And it may very well be left open for this perchance that ownership structure in the future of these types of developments are subject to change in that way. But I'm not a real estate attorney, so I'll be quiet now.
There mine. That's why I'm. Yeah, no, I mean, I guess as I'm looking at 315, I mean, that's these covenants and what have you are contained in there. And so it's probably the argument that you're not able to do it if it's not 18514. Change that is a different story.
I was gonna say, I can hear Diane scribbling notes for future potential changes to chapter 184 dash 14, am I right?
Yeah, you know me well. Viewing it.
I can hear it, I can't see it, but I can hear the scratch.
Okay, so. All right. So with that, is there anything else to add to this decision? Anyone? Okay. What's that?
Anybody from the audience?
That, no, I mean, it's not a, it's not a, we can't take on new evidence, so that's what creates the problem. All right, hold on one second, let me just. You have to change the record of vote because there's going to be votes on every. It's there. Okay, I think that's it. Okay, so record of votes. So just going to in a bunch of times. Okay. Anybody have anything else on this decision before we take a vote? Okay. Do I hear a motion to grant the special permit and site plan approval for 42 Depot Street, subject to the findings and terms and conditions contained in the written decision?
So move Richard singer.
Seconded.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and I.
Do I hear a motion to grant a well head protection district special permit, subject to the findings, terms and conditions contained in the written decision?
So move Richard singer.
Second.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and I.
Do I hear a motion to grant an earth excavation special permit, subject to the findings, terms and conditions contained in the written decision?
So move Richard singer.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and I.
Do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management permit, subject to the findings, terms and conditions contained in the written decision?
So move Richard singer.
Second.
Your opportunity while you get it, Jessica. Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and I.
All right, all set. That is done. I will, yeah, I'll get that over to you. It's not going to get signed tonight anyways, because we have no one. All right. Let me just stop the share here. All right, so let me just, we're going to talk about the draft. Well, it's on here for draft citizen petition for major development moratorium, future discussion. It sounded like the moratorium was a no go at the last meeting. Our vision, yeah. We got something here for it. It sounded like the moratorium was a no go among the board members at the last meeting, so I'm wondering if it's worth discussing the underlying suggested change to the process for major development applications, rather than the moratorium itself. Which was the sort of the originally proposed potential change by Diane Gale. Trying to see. One minute. Does this change from? Yeah, I have what I need, sorry. Save it under a name that I cannot figure out. I didn't save it, so one way or the other, I have to read that. Oh. So is that up there now? Okay. So this probably has my notes on it, but let's go to this portion of it, is that worth starting the discussion? Diane, if I'm missing, you know this a lot better than I do.
That is the synopsis that you're at.
This is the synopsis part?
Pretty much.
Has this been sent out yet?
Yes, right? Yeah, a while back, Dave. It was a while back.
Like 400 emails ago?
Yeah. Yeah. No, this was sent back in October, maybe something like that. You know, I think it's worth at least just quickly doing a rundown of what the basic structure is to refamiliarize people with it or to familiarize people with it. And then we can, you know, at least have that jumping off point for, for the next meeting.
Can we just refresh everything that this was the first? After I met you guys, this was the first.
Mike, can we come up to the table, please?
Well, thank you, I feel so special. I just want to refresh you that this was the first that I presented to Mike and John. And it doesn't reflect any of the discussions we've had on the moratorium. This is first pass.
So let me just put that.
And I presented it planning on having your input.
Okay. So let me just try to, and Diane, jump in whenever you want. But let me just, I wanted to just give people a quick little nutshell of what the underlying proposed by law changes, so we can have that in our heads. You know, so it basically adds a layer of review to what are defined as, you know, major development projects, which is a term that is open for discussion. And I think has been changed even from this original proposal, but let's just have however you feel like defining it in your head, major development proposal for the moment. And putting on I think more detail to what is submitted, so that you're not dealing with the same, you know, basic footprints that we get for any sort of project, you're getting a little bit more detail as to what this is, so you can fully assess all the, you know, impacts that a development of that size may have.
If I can just open right there.
Yeah.
The reason that I embarked on this was that infamous night of July 20th. Where Mr. Lebec said, and I believe some of you echoed that because of some vague terms or missing terms that a project like that could have gone through. So we took that to heart, we heard what was said, and we tried to close some of those gaps with this.
So one of the things that I took this as, and this is my opinion only, but I, you can look at what I'm pulling up here, which is this section about comprehensive impact statements. The way I sort of interpret this is the sort of on major developments, again, however that's defined preemptively require information that in all likelihood we'd be asking for down the line anyways. You know, which is going to go to sort of the impact of how a development of that size, what it's going to have on, on, you know, environmental impacts, traffic impacts. You know, water, air, whatever other impacts it may have, but at least getting that in the heads of the applicants and having it considered and addressed early on in the process, rather than you know, having it brought in front of the board and then having the board, you know, ask for that down the line. I think it, in all honesty, in my head, it probably shortens these hearings potentially by requiring more information that I think we're probably likely to ask in something of this size. So that's how I took that Diane, certainly jump in if I'm completely missing the point of what you're trying to do. You know, and so you can see here some of the things that we have here, you know, traffic, water, sewer, you know, stormwater, emergency services, emergency services, schools, environmental impacts. You know, those are the sort of big things that that are being addressed. Again, I just want to give the 30,000 foot overview, just so that this is more meant to be a discussion item than something that I think you know, is the final product necessarily. Those issues are addressed during the normal process. So I, again, I think this is, this is, I think they get addressed during a normal project, but you know, on a smaller project, some of those are not going to have much of an, you know, if you're going to put a small business somewhere, it's probably not going to be a huge traffic issue, right? But if you have a major development, the odds are there being a traffic impact are, you know, very good. And so this sort of just says, rather than waiting and having an application submitted, opening a public hearing, you know, starting that public hearing and then having to ask the applicant to go back and get this information, you're sort of something upfront and saying, okay, once, when you come in with your application, have this, have at least a statement about what the impacts of these criteria are going to be, so that we're ahead of the game going into it.
And so that the public is aware as well and not finding out in an emotional public hearing.
Well, for the public to come to the public table for that.
If it's not, what I'm suggesting is that these impact statements, this comprehensive impact statement would include all of these elements with the application. So that we can all see what it is.
Are you saying all of these elements that could be business coming in? I think it's proposed as a standard set. Yeah, I think it's all up for discussion, but you know, in my mind, as I look through them, generally any kind of major project, you know, and is going to check a bunch of those boxes, I mean, automatically, I mean, I don't think you're going to build a you know, 600 or 60,000 square foot building and not have, you know, some traffic impact or some you know, environmental impact, but you know, you should have some consideration of in advance. And the board is in all likelihood going to ask for that information somewhere down the line. You know. You know, again, I, I, I look at it as as helping the board by potentially getting more information right off the bat, that rather than having the minimum needed for the application and then having, you know, the board asks for stuff later on, that's sort of loaded up.
Can nobody provide what page it was?
No, it, it has been. I just think that that's, at least when we were talking about the moratorium, that became a bit of a hot point. And so I think it's up for discussion what a major development is. I mean, I think, you know, there's been suggestions about a certain size of a building. There's been suggestions about a certain amount of use of the acreage of the property. There's been, you know, suggestions about putting in subdivisions or developments of a certain size, number of units or houses.
How many car trips a day?
Car trips defining it. So, there's been suggestions as to how to define it. And, but again, I think that, that to me seems like a pretty substantial point of not necessarily disagreement, but debate as to what that's going to be at this point in time. That's why I kind of was vague when I said major developments.
Is this both for new businesses coming into town and existing businesses?
Also, a point of, you know, contention about the major development, whether it would apply to businesses who are expanding versus, you know, new, new developments or new buildings. You know, I think it was proposed initially to have both, but again, that was a decent point of discussion during previous meetings.
Diane, was this taken from another community?
I actually have referenced 11 different existing bylaws.
This isn't all taken from just one community. It's a whole different things that compiled up for us.
That, that I believe fit.
So, no community out there has all of these on one, on one sheet?
Not the way I may have proposed them exactly, but
No.
But in, pretty substantially, if they have the what am I going to say? If they have the comprehensive impact statements, they generally have something about design standards as well. They generally have something on each of those five elements I've proposed. It may not be worded exactly as this because some are larger cities with different regulations.
Not a small town like Southwick.
I use some large, medium, and smaller towns.
Yeah, I'd like to see a list of the communities.
They are.
Often, when we develop things, we do look at, they're in there. I don't have, I don't have this document.
Brookfield, Connecticut, Deerfield, Mass.
The only one I have is Deerfield?
Deerfield, Greenfield, Mass, Hampden, Mass, Montville, Connecticut, Oakdale, California, Simsbury, Connecticut, Springdale, Utah, Sturbridge, Mass, and some reference to the state of New Jersey in there somewhere.
All right.
I'm going to send it around. Yeah, we need this.
Well, you got it on October 28th from Mr. Goddard over here. But I will
Excellent.
We'll reset it around.
I must have not printed it out.
That's fine.
I got a quick question on that.
Yeah, Jesse, go ahead.
Like, on the content that we grabbed from each town.
Just keep your voice up so that folks can hear.
And the content that you grabbed from each town, it should, you should reference each part that you took because it might be out of context when you put it together.
I believe I did.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. You need to mark the town. Which town that that statement came from in that note. And maybe it might have older people where you pulled that from, because this looks like just a cut and paste of all these different towns slapped together.
It's not, and it was done with consultants and civil engineers as well. It wasn't just me cutting and pasting.
Well, we need a list of the civil engineers to
Is this?
This was done by consultants and civil engineers?
Consulting with, yes.
Well, then. Not by.
With, well, yeah.
I did with, yes.
Not, but so it wasn't done by a consultant. You talked with consultant.
Correct.
Okay, you talked with them, right?
Yes, yes.
All right. So, the date on that? Yeah, I'm just sending it around. But the other thing too, just as we keep going along here is, and this came up before about a and it's structured and other things that we do in the town about abandoned building, financial security bonds, sort of, you know, when we talk about the, what was it, central? Chevrolet, was that the one? I keep forgetting which one it's which. The car dealership where the VW is now.
Oh, suburban Chevy.
Yeah, I don't know why it's suburban. I said the same thing last night, too. So. You know, I mean, I think data concept is being proposed in here too, as to what you do or how you address that potential scenario so you're not left with, you know, again, this would apply to major development, so you're not left with a large abandoned building and, you know, limited potential uses for it. So, you know, that's another aspect of this that I think is, again, worthy of discussion. I don't think this is certainly, I wouldn't treat this as something which is, you know, a yea or a nay. I think it's, I think this is a, a document that can generate discussion and adoption of what is necessary for Southwick, but I don't, you know, to me, I think a lot of this helps the board. It helps the town, so I think it's worth discussing.
Yeah, there's also an awful lot of things on there, Mike, that are going to drive up an awful lot of costs for an awful lot of people. I mean, if this is done for somebody who wants to put a development in here, you're having them do all kinds of studies, get all, you know, scenic, unique, global, historical, and archaeological features, recreational areas on the site and the vicinity of the site. You know, every time, just, I just want to explain something. Every time you impose something on somebody, somebody has to pay for it. Now, it's like, well, always it's a guy building the development. He's making a ton of money off it. No, you know who's paying it for it? John and Cindy, who's trying to buy that house that used to sell for 267,000, is now selling for 580,000. So, he says, you know what? I can't afford to live in Southwick anymore, so I'm going to move to Westfield or up to Blanford. Because this is becoming Simsbury with all this.
So, I would say this.
This is just, I like to be careful of this. That's all I'm asking. Let's just be careful of this.
But I think you're identifying a, you know, a split that I think is important to discuss, which is, I, I'm not sure developments belong in here because we have 315 and that's a reasonably detailed chapter. And it's also something that we can amend just through public hearing with the planning board and address, you know, some tweaks to that if we need to. I'm not, I've never been entirely convinced that developments belong in this type of structure, which, you know, once you take that out, I, I think makes this to have reasonably limited, you know, applicability in town. I mean, there's not going to be that many in this town, realistically. There's just not the zoned land for that many major developments. It just doesn't exist unless things are getting significantly knocked down and combined over the next handful of years or not.
Mike, you know, you know as well as I do, that there are a lot of people in this town that are money broke and land rich. And they're waiting for their opportunity to cash in on the family dream.
As developments, Dave, I mean, it's not, we're not, that's developments. That's residential land or agricultural land. That's not, that's not land for a, a commercial use. And that's why I, I distinguish the two things in my mind. So, I don't disagree with you. I just think, you know, that's where that, the heart of that discussion goes to.
I don't disagree with you either. That's why we're here discussing it.
I just don't, I just hope that we, as we move forward something like this, that we're really cautious as to how much we control, we start to impose on things. You know, do we have some, we have a few corporate places here in town that are probably on the verge of going, well, 60,000, that's a limit I'm not going to be able to stay under, so I'm going to move to Westfield where I can take care of it. Where they'll let me move anywhere I want, or Agawam. If we don't find that delicate balance between industrial, commercial, and residential, eventually it is going to be the middle class that's going to take the hit. We can say up and down all we want how that's not going to happen, but you look around and it's happened in so many towns. It's, everything is getting priced right off the market as it is already. And now we're trying to find ways to make it even worse. I went, I went a year and a half ago to landing nine out of 10 proposals for my business. Now I'm landing three out of 10 because the economy over the last two years has gotten skyrocketing. Folks just can't afford to make the changes they need. So, now we're going to take it, we're going to make it so they're going to do 10,000 things more that's going to trickle down to Bobby and Cindy that are trying to buy that house. That's the bottom line.
That's developments. And that's fine.
It's all the above. You screw corporate, it's coming down to us still. It's still coming down. And if we don't, what are we going to, we're going to, oh, we're going to raise the tax rate on, 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 on commercial properties or industrial to compensate. So, we get, we already got, we've already got an unfriendly attitude toward business and now other folks are going to go, you know what? I'm not moving to that town because it's going skyrocketing.
No, and that's fine. I mean, I, you know, I can assure you, as you know, Dave, you and I have different opinions on trickle-down economics, but that's all right. So, I mean, my suggestion would be, I just sent that email around to everybody to take a look through. You know, we'll carry it on for the next meeting and talk more about the substance I think of this rather than the moratorium because it didn't sound like that was a starter to anybody. So, let's actually talk about what the proposal is and go from there.
And I think we could divide it into whether we put it into 185 or we include it in the application process. However, you want to clarify the application process. So, we have all the information we need when we open a special permit hearing. It's in the application. It's been dealt with. I'm also working on something related to this, which I may bring at the next meeting. Particularly focused on traffic, which seems to be one of the major concerns when we get into these types of developments. And it's pretty complex and complicated and hopefully it can be simplified enough to where it's a fairly unbiased look at a project and the impact it might have. We've got to try to keep it fairly basic and focused. I think if we get too broad, we're just, we're just going to have all kinds of problems.
Yep. Okay. Well, it's been circulated, so folks can look at it again before the next meeting and we'll keep it on the agenda.
Okay, just remember that that was the first pass and I was here to discuss it.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Doug Mugglin has his hand raised.
Doug's holding. I have so many things up here that I
Who's on the owl?
Lost, I've lost the thing here. Doug, go right ahead.
I just have a question. And, and, and I wanted to thank Ms. Gail for bringing the state of New Jersey into this discussion, but
Words never spoken by anybody.
You, you heard it here first. So, on your agenda tonight, this was carried as a citizen petition. Is that the intent? Because then it just needs to get clocked in, heard, and take a vote, a public hearing by the planning board and vote it up or down and send it to town meeting. If it's a collaborative effort for discussion by the planning board by their own adoption, I would suggest it get clarified on the agenda like the previous moratorium was. And I think that's, I think it's the proper process. I just want to be clear because the way I read it on the agenda was different than how it was just discussed tonight, but.
No, it's, it's a fair point and, and I'll change it on the next agenda. It's, you know, the design has been, I mean, I won't speak to what Diane will eventually do, but, you know, what I have asked her is if it gets brought, you know, to bring it in front of the planning board, let the process go forward. See if we can get input on it, you know, get a better product at the end of the day and, and ideally it, something comes out of the planning board if that's, you know, where it ends up. But if not, then, you know, if she wants to do a citizen position, she can.
Of course.
Probably have a better product at the end of the day than by going through the process, so.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. I just wanted to be clear because the process is very different, right? If, if it's the planning board's zoning change versus a citizen petition, you hear it. If it's a citizen petition, you hear it and send it with a recommendation, up, down, or indifferent. If it's a collaborative effort of the planning boards, taking a, an idea from a citizen is a great idea. I thought that was the proper approach on the previous discussion and this from, that's just my opinion. I, I think you'll end up with a better product and you know, where it ends up and you get all kinds of viewpoints. Dave's got some excellent points. I think it echoed a little bit of what I mentioned a couple of weeks ago. You know, I, I'm not sure on the size of things, whether 60,000 is a magic number or I, you know, but I know it when, you know, you know it when you saw it, but I don't know what's the right answer, but the discussion would probably be a good one to have. But Dave has some good points, too. There's a lot. And you're right, Mike. I agree with you about the development piece. But you've got chapter 315 in there that is going to drive a lot of that. And the only thing I would disagree on with you, Mr. Chairman, is that there are large tracts of land that are still undeveloped that could hit well over that 50 number in town. If you drive around, you'll see them. They're not available for sale right now, right now, but but I think it's the commercial development that, that got it. And I think it should be, just my opinion, is it should be new development and perhaps there should be some consideration of some transactional process by, for that development. So, maybe to protect, to what, kind of what Dave said, to protect existing businesses in town that want to grow and expand, that we should try to nurture that where possible as a town. And, and, you know, if it's, if it's a, if it's a business coming from outside of town that's proposing a large project, maybe the burden is higher. I don't, that's something for future discussion. But again, I just wanted to clear, my main comment here was to clarify the process for, for a future agenda discussion, to be clear, whether it's the planning board having a discussion regarding a proposed bylaw or if it's a citizen petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I do want to say that I do prefer the planning board discussion. I could have gone the citizen petition route and I chose not to because I respect this process.
100% agree. I just, I just want to be clear because it, it's a very different process. And, you know, you and I had an email discourse on this, but, you know, I think it's great. But when I read it on the agenda tonight, I wasn't quite sure what, because I thought it was a continuation of the previous discussion and then it said citizen petition. So, I, you know, I sat through the meeting tonight to try to get understanding of what it was. I don't know who else reads the agendas besides me. I don't know. But I, you know, I just wanted to make sure it's clear for everyone who, who, you know, who's looking at it.
Oh, and that's fair. And to, and to be fair to Diane, she actually texted me the exact same question when she saw the agenda, I believe, essentially, what, what's the topic? So, it's, it's fair, it's a fair question. You know, it'll be changed on the next agenda. All right. Next routine business is Noble Steed. Jesse, do you want to come on up? All right. No. All right. So, my understanding is that you can go because you had the meeting, but you can go.
The planner will The planner will speak.
All right. Okay. Last Thursday, we had a meeting. Jesse, town planner, DPW director, David Williams, Dennis Clark, Ian Kyle Scott. And so that is on the table to look at some projected plans over at Noble Steed, return to compliance, of course, some conservation matters. Let me try to gather my thoughts of this hour. First item of consideration, conservation enforcement order has been lifted. That was satisfied, Jesse's efforts. Ian, he submitted the first of a series of post-storm reports to satisfy that. As often from that discussion after the last meeting, we were some further pro to it. Conservation also, that's there, they hold their own bond for satisfaction of the private plants. So just something to keep in mind as we look at this moving forward. With that being conservation, I'm also of the opinion, based on the tolling of local permits under the COVID-19 emergency that Jesse's conservation permit over Noble Steed is still valid. So I wanted to try to bundle that up as one piece and put that aside. And Jesse, here's where I probably need to get a little muddy. But essentially some of that return to compliance was parted up with some improvements that are being pursued out there to frankly bring the infrastructure and a roadway to a temporary cul-de-sac in the vicinity of lot fifteen. I'm skipping around a little bit in terms of the concept that was provided here.
It's past lot fifteen.
So, and so it's fair to say to the vicinity of where the
And it's already, we've already paved up to that point and all the drains is in up to that point. And what was discussed in the meeting was you know, on October eighteenth, Randy submitted a letter to you guys showing, you know, the lots that were, or the covenant was in your, your guys' favor. I'm not sure of the exact dollar, but as of, as of today, or as of last, then to last week, it's even more in your favor because another four hundred feet of roadways in place. Drainage, electrical utilities of past lot fifteen and sixteen. Which even greatens your position with, if not even doing another monetary valuation to that. And what we discussed further in the meeting was that the additional improvement, well, I'm not going to call them improvements, but roadwork that is required to satisfy the public way is in place by the end of this week. And then I was going to provide Randy with a monetary valuation of the balance of the retained, remaining work. And we were going to agree on a figure. And whatever that figure is, we'll present it to you guys and then post a bond for the remaining work. But up until that point, you know, what we're looking for is to get lot sixteen at least as of now. Because we do have more work in place than what was originally discussed back on October eighteenth with, with all the muddy waters gone.
So if I understand this
So if you, if you take, if you look at it and you take section A.
You've done it.
A is done. And if you go to section B, that'll be done by Friday or Thursday.
What part have you completed so far?
Number one's completed, number two's completed. Number three's completed. Number five is just a formality. Number four is going to be completed on Thursday. That's scheduled for Thursday. Number seven is scheduled for Thursday as well. And number eight is just a formality and number nine is just a reference to the SK joint that I provided.
All right. So you're going to take out the temporary pipe and put in the turnaround.
Yep. And Randy was out there on Friday and he saw the paving and then he was out there today as well. This afternoon.
And you, this one has it, at least what we have here, it's up to here, but you're saying it's past fifteen.
Yeah, that is past fifteen. See, that's fifteen, sixteen line. That's where the end of the pavement is.
Okay, into the lot fifteen frontage.
And so if you go to SK three, you see this is the only remaining road that's going to be left. Blue is the curve and pink is the sidewalk.
And granted, I recognize that the pace as well as the drainage structures and piping, Randy was hoping that hadn't been installed just yet under D three.
Yeah, we're, we're, they were backfilling that stuff today, so that'll be finalized tomorrow. There's like, you know, there'll be an overlap. We ran out of daylight today. But all the structures are in and piped between lot fifteen and sixteen, all the way down to the outlet pipe, which is between lot eleven and seventeen. Which is on SK two. Yeah, and Randy's probably referring to the, the outlet pipe not being replaced too. Like I said, you know, we've done way more than you know, we've paved through, I think it's like three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five feet of roadway.
Yep. So was Randy suggested anything that would be different than what Jesse was saying about decreasing the value of work remaining? Or is there anything else that we're missing that would add to that?
Some of the disconnect between what Randy interpreted out there and what they already do in the ground relates to brought up, I think one of Randy's concerns was that that was brought up as a matter of opportunity without some of the piping and structure being in the ground. Which I think we can imagine would throw his balance of the model improvement off kilter.
So where is the area that he's not sure that the drainage structures have been installed?
To be fair, I'm going just to call it from where, where we left last week. So from a call of the eleven seventeen field divergence station on the side from that point to where the structures were to be brought. Is that right, Jesse?
All those structures are in play.
Here to here.
Yeah, there, there is. You can go off there and look at that.
Pipe and
You can, you can drive out there and see for yourself. Yeah. And like I said, the outlet pipe is scheduled for Thursday. The only reason that we jumped around is because the paving plants are slowly closing and we have to do this stuff and patch it up before the so we can plow like, I don't really want to plow stone. That's, that's why we did it like.
All right. Randy going to have the opportunity to go look at what's in and
Yeah, we took, I, I mean, I told him it was going to be done for Friday, so.
Yes. Okay. Thoughts from the board?
You know, and like I said, I'm not looking for every single lot. I'm just looking for that one lot. And then, like I said, in my notes here, and we went over it in the meeting. I'm going to do a monetary evaluation report. You know, starting Friday, probably going to take me a week to do. I'm going to sit down with Randy, go through it and agree on a number. That's a balance that's remaining. And then that'll be presented to you guys. And so you know, at that time, we'll, I'll request a a switch from the covenant and move a bond to a, I'm sure.
So I have it in my head, take out, take enough sixteen. What's left in the covenant?
Eleven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Oh, it's seven.
In seventeen, yeah. So one, two, three, four, five, six. So I mean, around number six hundred thousand dollars. And that was before you know, the roads and the electricals complete past fifteen, sixteen line.
All right. Anybody have any comments on the board?
No, we're, the bond is it's not going to change at all until you do this monetary computation. Then you're going to
Oh, yeah.
Drop the in lieu of bond and do a bond.
Yeah, the covenant will be, but I, I think I need to submit a formal request. Is that correct?
If we approve the release, how, what's the process for we send a letter to somewhere saying that that is, is released? I mean, we could, we could delay actually executing the letter until Randy gives us the final feedback on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think something needs to be signed and submitted to the registry.
There are forms.
It's just a draft letter that needs to be signed by these guys or somebody on the planning board.
I would second Marcus's suggestion that we have something in writing from Mr. Brown indicating all that we've heard this evening. And that the figures would now meet his requirements in us releasing number sixteen.
Well, the, the figures already met on October eighteenth. I'm just saying they're in greater, they're, the figures are greater now.
I would like that in writing from our DPW director.
Here's, here would be my suggestion. I'll make your speed for Randy, but do you think Randy can get out there tomorrow? Actually, tomorrow's going to be a, I'll say.
I, I apologize, I don't know. So recall what schedule Randy has going to go on.
You got two days, Wednesday and Thursday.
Here's what I'd say.
Tomorrow, so you can
So here's what I'd say.
And contact you.
I just, I, I at a minimum I need to run that form by town council. I'll do that first thing in the morning. I think, but I don't know that I can sign it on behalf of Ford. And it would be fine as long as we have a vote to support that. Again, I have to run that by. So my suggestion would be to, you know, we'll vote on it, subject to, you know, Randy taking a look at that. I'm assuming, you know, the issue, and I get that there was purely on that a, a greater number, but it was slim, right? And you're talking about estimates.
Well, that's why, and that's why I think Randy has even said it before, he's not a master. And that's why I'm going to provide you guys with, or provide him with a monetary valuation after Friday and we'll just, I'll sit down with them and discuss it. And then once we agree on that, whatever that number is, that'll be proposed to you guys.
And then that'll be clean. You won't have to
Then it's clean.
So my suggestion would be, we can vote on this, subject to, you know, just Randy going out there taking a look. I have to do this anyway, so there's going to be a little bit of logistics anyways. I suspect it'll probably be able to get done before the end of the week. And, you know, I, to me, that's fine as long as Randy can confirm it. But it sounds like you've progressed and that difference between the two numbers is going to be, you know, enough that there would be no concern even with estimates that, that that would be still covered. And, you know, with the idea that this is going to be a non-issue soon enough.
So there's no there's no muddy waters, if you want to use that term or whatever it is.
Listen, I get it, but I mean, you've been in this town long enough to know that this town's gotten hosed a few times in the last time. Bonds, you know, they tend to look at this a little bit tighter than and I'm not sure it's a fact, but they do. So why don't I entertain a motion to do a partial release of the covenant and lieu of bond related to lot sixteen subject to the confirmation by the DPW director of the
Work completed?
Yeah, the work that work in place Jesse had talked about in section B that has been completed.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Philson, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
All right. So I'll take this, get this over to Bacon Wilson tomorrow.
They shouldn't do that, yeah, because they, we've had that signed off on before.
I, I assume so.
And Bacon Wilson drafted it too.
That's right, they were, that's right, initially, yeah, yeah.
So if they set something wrong with it, that's their problem.
But I do want to, because because we don't have people here tonight. I want to make sure that I can do it myself. Because otherwise we'd be taking time to go gather signatures. All right.
Thanks.
What time is it?
Yeah, we got to, we got to
We're going to set a record. We have already.
It's no fun with David Sutton sitting here.
David Sutton even fixed the clock.
Hey, keep it down. I'm trying to sleep.
Oh, sorry.
And why does this clock say seven thirty?
Not really.
Master plan advisory committee update from the chairperson.
Yes, we are doing that. We are doing that. We met on December sixteenth. Our next meeting is January twentieth. A few of us, the vice chair, the committee, myself, Mr. Goddard and Corey Rollin have communicated with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on a conference call. And there were revising their work plan. And we're going to whittle some numbers down, but I think we'll be all right in the end. And that's it pretty much. The only other thing is there will be an insert. Part of the insert in the town census mailing, which goes out in January, will contain two paragraphs. Part of the insert in the town census mailing, which goes out in January, will contain two paragraphs about the master plan. So everybody in town pays taxes will get to see a little bit about it. That's it. Any questions? No.
Good. Short-term rental subcommittee update.
Has it gone far? Uh, it's on, uh, I feel, uh, Megan, I'm gonna dash to, uh. To. I don't like seven. Although everybody has indicated, uh, willingness to participate. Problem is I'm gonna be gone for three months.
Well, you can zoom. You can zoom there.
Um, all right.
You know, John can set up a time on Zoom time, something like that will. Yep. I'll verify those windows with you, um, before we sort of buy that. Uh, and as discussed, we'll set that up as a public hearing for this question.
Okay. And one for sure on minutes because I want to make sure with Meg that, uh, we have everything, uh, in what we have. So.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any motion, uh, you feel like making at this point?
We'll make the motion to close the meeting.
Wait a second.
Dave's been a second.
All those in favor say aye.